Hello everyone. Welcome back to Sunday's study session. I know I haven't uh. I have uploaded the research session for the Havamal. As I usually do, but. Today, this week has been pretty hectic. In regards to a lot of things, did a lot of. New things with new Sala over this past week. So that's exciting, very exciting. What else? Work has been crazy, but. Been been doing as good so far, trying my best to be around for you guys. I know it's not. As much as people would like, but I'm doing the best I can with what I got. I know the goal was to like. Stream throughout the week, uh, like just play Assassin's Creed Valhalla. So after the stream, I'm gonna see how it works. I'm gonna test a few things to make sure like the the stream and doesn't go super bad. Like how it did was a Tuesday or something like that, so. Yeah, that's what we're gonna do for Sunday's study session. We're going to go over the next story and. The where to get a. Which is what's the next story that we're gonna do? So we did the Bullispa and we're gonna. Did the Havama last week? So we're gonna go Odin's contest with Riddle Weaver, Bathruth's near small. This is probably one of my favorite. Sagas in the poetic data. So I'm really excited. Let's just jump right into it and. I took advice from my friends and whatnot about me like over studying. And all that jazz, so. To try to eliminate that, I'm gonna be taking just a little bit longer in in between each and every stanza. But then I'm also going to read out of the Jackson Crawford edition, which is just pure English. I don't know why, like I like the Lee Hollander version, but. With it being old English and if you're new to Norse paganism, it's easier to grasp. Um, with modern English compared to old English. So we're gonna go with Bathruth's near small Odin's contest with the Riddle Weaver. Odin said, advise me now, Frig. I want to travel and visit Riddle Weaver. I want to have a contest about old lore with that wise giant. Frick said, I would advise you, Odin, father of battles, to stay here in the homes of the gods. I don't think there is any giant who is as wise as Riddle Weaver. I have traveled so much, I have tried much, and I have often tested the mighty. Now I want to know what kind of hospitality there is in Rita Weaver's hall. Frick said, then travel safe and come back in one piece. Oh my gosh. Restart. Break said, then travel safe and come back in one piece. Stay safe on your journeys, Odin. May your wits serve you well wherever you go when you exchange words with a giant. Odin then went to test the wisdom of that wise giant Odin came to the hall widow reaver. Owned and he went straight inside. Odin said, hail, Riddle Weaver. I have come to your hall for the purpose of seeing you. The first thing I want to know is if you are wise or perhaps even all knowing. Riddle Weaver said, who is the man who stands in my hall? Who is this I'm speaking to? You won't leave my hall unless you prove yourself to be even wiser than I am. Odin said, my name is good advisor and I've come to your hall thirsty from a long journey after. My long trip. I have need of hospitality and a good welcome giant. Riddle Weaver said, well then, good advisor. Why are you still standing up? Take a seat in my hall, then we'll find out who knows more, the guest or his wise old host. Odin said, a poor man, if he visits a rich man ought to be silent or say only what he must. Too much talk will bring harm to the guest of a grudging host. Riddle Weaver said, tell me, good advisor, if you want to test yourself. Sitting in your seat in my hall, what is the name of the horse who pulls the sun over the humans below? Odin said, the horse's name skin faxi. He pulls the bright sun over the humans below. Everyone thinks he's the best horse who lives in Midgard. The mane of that horse always shines. Riddle Weaver said, tell me, good advisor, if you want to test yourself sitting in your seat in my hall. What is the name of the horse who pulls the moon east to west at night over the mighty gods? Odin said, the horse is named him faxi. Who pulls the sun east to west every night over the mighty gods. The slobber from his mouth falls to the ground every morning, and that's the reason for the dew. Riddle Weaver said, tell me, good advisor, if you want to test yourself sitting in your seat in my hall. What is the name of the river that separates the land of the gods from the giants? Odin said, the river is named Infink, which separates the lands of the gods from those of the giants. That river will run free forever. It will free never freeze over. Riddle Weaver said, tell me, good advisor, if you want to test yourself sitting in your seat in my hall. What is the name of the valley where Surt will lead the final battle against the gods? Odin said, the valley is named Big Rith, where Surt will lead the final battle against the gods. It is 100 miles long on each side. That's why this valley is chosen. Riddle Weaver said, you are wise indeed, guest. Come sit at my bench. Let's talk. Together here, let's wager our heads on which of us two is wiser here in my hall, guest. Odin said, tell me this first, if your wits serve you well, if you know it, Riddle Weaver. How did the earth come to be or heaven? Which one was the first giant? Riddle Weaver said, the earth was made from Ymir's flesh. The rocks were made from his bones. The sky was made from the skull of that ice cold giant. The sea was made from his blood. Odin said, tell me this second, if your wits serve you well, if you know it, Riddle Weaver, how did the moon come to be? That one that floats over the earth or what about the sun giant? Riddle Weaver said, Mundalafari is the name of the father of the moon. He was also the son's father. They will float across the sky every day to help the humans till the time and season. Odin said, tell me this third, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver. How did the day come to be or the night which passes above with its waxing and waning moon? Riddle Weaver said, Delling is the name of the father of the day and the night is Norby's daughter. The waxing and waning of the moon was designed by the gods to help till. Tell the time and season. Odin said, tell me this fourth, if you want to be called wise. If you know it, Riddle Weaver, how did the winter come to be or the warm summer? When did they come up? First come about? I wanna say I did. This one. Oh, Odin said, tell me this fourth, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver. How did the winter come to be or the warm summer when they? They did first come about. Riddle Weaver said, Finn's fall is the name of the father of winter and Sfazus. Sfaththus, the father of summer. Odin said, Odin said, tell me this fifth, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver. Who was the oldest being, whether god or giant, who appeared in the oldest times? Riddle Weaver said, untold years ago before the earth was made, Burgomir was born. His father was Threth Grufnir Mir. Ruth Gale Mir. And through Ruth Gale Mir's father was. Our our groom mirror. Our our girl mirror. Our girl Mel mirror. Tell me this six, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver, how did our go mirror come to be? What was the origin? Origin of the first giant? Riddle Weaver said, drops of poison fell from a living live gear they called and formed the giant. All the families of us giants have our origin there. That's why we're bad through and through. Odin said, tell me this seventh, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver. How did that giant Ymir have children if he had no woman to share his bed? Riddle Weaver said, they say two giants, a man and a woman grew under his armpits. One foot had a child with the other foot. And their son had six heads. Odin said, tell me this eighth, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver. What is your first memory? The earliest thing you remember, I suspect you're all knowing giant. Riddle Weaver said, my very first memory is of Burgomir untold years before the earth was formed. I remember the wise giant laid out in this coffin. We're on stanza 35 of that through sneers mall. Hope you're enjoying it so far. I know I am most definitely. And kind of want to apologize that I know um my. I'm been stumbling over words. I do not believe myself to be. A master in the words and the arts. I just know the gods. I know the stories and I want. I always want to know more. I'm just learning each. And everything, uh, Brandon Green. Con- conversation available? Conversation available? What do you mean by that? And I hope you all are enjoying it. This is something that we haven't done. Or that we've started doing with new Sala, so. Is just documenting, reading the poetic data. So. When they say we are all bad, what does that mean to you? So what I'm think what you're referring to. Is. Uh, stands at 30, five through smaller. Jackson Crawford edition Odin said, tell me this six, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver, how did Aggromil? Come to be, what was the origin of the first giant? Riddle Weaver said, drops of poison fell from a live gear they yelled and formed the giant. All the families of us giants have our origin there. That's why we're bad through and through. If that's the correct stanza you're referring to, please let me know. That's what I think it is. And I'll be waiting for your response to make sure we're talking about the correct stances. Yes, sir, and this is the conversation lore. Alrighty, so um. Wisdom comes in all shapes, so. I'm going to be also reading from the Lee Hollander version, the same stances that um I'm gonna skip what Odin asks and just give Riddle Weaver's. Answer. So this is stanza 31, 31, the lay of Darthus near mall, the poet together by Lee Hollander. Out of Elavigar sprit venom drops and waxed till there was an eton. This sense our kin came together, hence frightful and fierce our ways. So Elavigar is stormy rivers imagined as venomic cold rivers in the far north located in Gilfengat. Gilfagning, chapter four. And the Prozetta. So. The Giants bad through and through. Part of me wants to go about that. All all giants are bad. But all giants aren't good. I don't know why me. I don't know why Riddle Weaver is a giant and saying. That's why we're bad. We're as in we are bad through and through. I don't. I'm honestly stumped. I don't really have a. Honest opinion about it and um. Thoughts about it. It hasn't really crossed my mind. It's just. Himself saying that, you know, we're bad, but also they. Azier or Azier are bad, the Vanier are bad, so that's. My interpretation and that's where that's what I'm getting out of this. What do you think this means, Brandon? Could be that there's standoff. And that's why the drops of poison fell from a live. Eli for a gear. E L I V A G A R, that's how you spell it. And that talks about being an ice cold river. They jailed and formed the giant. All the families of us giants have our origin there, so that's where all giants come from. That's why we're bad through and through. Maybe just being. Is that we have bad in us and given a choice, we can make that change? Yeah, that's. That's kind of what I'm getting at. I. It's that's it's it's honestly a confusing stanza and a. Different viewpoint, um, a giant saying, yeah, this is why we're bad through and through is from drops of poison fell from. Uh, the first giant. And form the giants, all the families of giants have our origin there, and that's why we're bad through and through. Maybe it's because of the poison, that's why they're bad. I mean. From the poetic Etta Prozetta and all that, we know the Azier come from Ymir. Well, descendants through Ymir. So we're all giants in a sense. So. And if we're in the. If all Azier are Yoten and were made in their image. Through Odin Vili Vay and the creation myth of Askinembala and we're put in. The shape of the gods. Do we have parts of that poison put in us? That's a good question. It's something to ponder. We're gonna continue with stanza 35 of the proof near small, Riddle Weaver said. My very first memory is of Burgomir untold years before the earth was formed. I remember the wise giant laid out in his coffin. Odin said, tell me this ninth, if you want to be called wise, if you know it, Riddle Weaver, how did the wind come to be? That wind that blows over the sea if something that is seldom seen. Of cold. This possibly in a modern interpretation. It's very possible. I mean, I wanna say. Yes, I mean, most rivers don't freeze over. But it's not. The meaning of ice cold river might not be that the river froze over. It's just it's as cold as ice and it's piercing. To the flesh as ice is. Stands at 37, Riddle Weaver said, there is a giant eagle named. First Felg who sits in the skies and they say that. It's from the wing wings, the wind is blown. Odin said, tell me this 10th, if you must know the fate of all the gods wise, Riddle Weaver, how did North? Come to be among the Azier? He had hundreds of temples and altars, but he was not born among the Azier. Riddle Weaver said, Wise Vanir created him in Vanaheim and gave him as a hostage, the Azier at Ragnarok. He will go back home to the wise Vanir. Odin said, tell me this 11th, where is the hall where men fight each and every day? Riddle Weaver said, all the Indian yard and Odin's hall fight. Each other every day, they kill each other, but then ride back from battle and sit in the evenings as friends. Odin said, tell me this 12th, you must know the fate of all the gods wise, where do we were? Tell me the truth about the secrets of the giants and the gods, you wise giant. Riddle Weaver said, I can tell you the truth about the secrets of the giants and all the gods. For I visit them all at home. I've been to nine realms beneath hell to realms where the dead travel after hell. Odin said, I have traveled so much, I have tried much, and I have often tested the mighty. Will any humans remain alive after the winter has passed over Midgard? Riddle Weaver said, life impulsive with life will survive. They will hide in Hodmirs forest. They will eat the morning dew and renew the human race. Odin said, I have traveled so much, I have tried much, and I have often test the mighty. How will there still be a son when the wolf has eaten the one that now flies in heaven? Riddle Weaver said, the son will have a doctor before Fanyer eats her. And that young son will travel on her mother's path when the gods have all died. Odin said, I've tried so mu- oh. Odin said, I have traveled so much, I have tried much, and I have often tested the mighty. Who are those young women who fly above the sea who travel in the air with their craft? Riddle Weaver said, there are three rivers that fall over these young women of Mockthrus near. Those there only happens, oh. Alright, I'm just gonna restart that stanza. Riddle Weaver said, there are three rivers that fall over those young women of Mog Thrastier. Their only happiness is a mid guard through. They were born among the giants. Oh, though they were born among the giants. Odin said, I have traveled so much, I have tried much, and I have often tested the mighty. Which god will inherit Asgard when the fires of Ragnarok go out? Riddle Weaver said, Bithar in valley will inhabit Asgard when the fires of Ragnarok go out. Mothea Magni won't inherit Mjolnir after Thor is killed. Odin said, I have traveled so much, I have tried much, and I have often tested the mighty. How will Odin lose his life at Ragnarok? Riddle Weaver said, a wolf will swallow Odin, but Bithar will bench him. He'll cut open the wolf's. Cold jaws kill the killer of his father. Brandon, I hope that answered your question to somewhat. But I would love to hear your interpretation of what your stance is. On um. That stanza that we read. Odin said, I have traveled so much, I have tried much, and I have often tested the mighty. What did Odin whisper in Baldur's ear before he placed them? Placed him on the pyre. Riddle Weaver said, no one knows what you said in those ancient days. In your son's ear, I have spoken my aged wisdom. I have told you of Ragnarok. I have spoken with a doomed mouth. Now I know that I wagered my head against Odin's. And wisdom, but you Odin are forever the wisest of all. And that is for first near small and the poetic Etta. I hope you all enjoyed. And a little. Intermediate break right now as get ready for the next section, which is. Talking about um the stu- this is where we go into the study session and I have a. Pretty little. Idea of what? Is how Odin might have won against after sneer small earlier. Or. How do I say this? I have a. UPG reason of why I think Odin won against Riddle Weaver earlier. Before he asked a question about Balder, so. I hope you all enjoyed the reading of the first near small. Apologize for my lack of ability to say the words in the correct way um. So yeah. And if you don't know what the next section is. The next section of Sunday's study session. Is we go into the deep dive of the story that we currently read. And show and try to learn about it together. So. If there's anyone currently here and you have a question, please write in a chat. And we can go about it, just how I helped Brandon with his current one, the best I knew how. Wish I could give a better solid answer, but. Yeah. Okay. Trying to. So. this, here's one of them that might be interesting is when Odin is asking where north, which is Nord, comes from. Why does he sit among, among the Azier? If he was not born among them, meaning if Nord sits among the Azier, why is he not of Azier blood? And Riddle Weaver answers this very calmly and says, well, he's Vanir, he's Vanir blood, just as Frey and Freya, his father, or Frey and Freya are the children of Nord. That's what I was meaning to say. But they're a Vanir, which is um nature-based as a tribe. So when talking about a tribe, there's many different tribes such as Azier. Azier, dwarf, elf, Jotun, muse bull. Um Vanir and yeah. Those are the ones coming to my head, but each tribe has their own lineage. Now, we don't, we only really know of where the Jotuns and the Azier, the current Azier come from. But we don't know anything about where the Vanir come from. They just kind of appear. We know a story of them during the Azier Vanir War. And that's kind of all we know about the focal point of where the Vanir first come from. And Riddle Weaver also said that during Ragnarok, the Vanir, all the Vanir or at least Nord will go back home to the wise Vanir. Now it's up to interpretation during Ragnarok when Surt finally plunges a sword into the, the valley of the final battle, if the whole nine worlds are gonna be engulfed in flames or just, or just where that current, where the battle is currently being held in that realm. Well, I would like to believe, and this is my UPG when it comes to Ragnarok, is that I think when Surt plunges his sword into the valley and the fire is engulfing Yggdrasil, in essence, all the nine worlds are getting caught on fire and rebirth. Same thing as like when a fire is being in a forest fire. Sometimes that's healthy instead of leaving the forest how it is because it kills all the overgrowth. It lets new rebirth happen. Um so fire equals destruction, which equals creation. And that's how I think of it. So that is my interpretation of Ragnarok. All the nine worlds are getting engulfed. So even if Nord goes back to Valheim, does not mean he's safe from Ragnarok. I believe that he'll still gonna die and then the next cycle, the inc- the embodiment of what Nord stands for um will be created out of that. Same thing like how Kavasphere came out out of the um the, the spit and uh what am I trying to say? I think the new embodiment of Nord's